Welcome to the October 6, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Alex Kindred giving the invocation. Pastor Alex is the Muscatine Police Department's Chaplain, so have you approached the podium? Welcome back.
As we gather here tonight, there are families all over town sitting down to supper, and I suspect that almost none of them are thinking about the things that you guys will be thinking about tonight: inflation, and budgets, and public safety, and all of those sorts of things. And they don't have to think about those things because you're here, looking after them. So thank you for your service to a town that too rarely knows to thank you for it. And if we are in need of help, as I often am, let's turn in prayer. Eternal God, we give you thanks for this opportunity to be together to serve, to advocate for flourishing life here in Muscatine. So bless these proceedings, and bless each of us who are here, that we might have your wisdom to advocate for peace and justice, and that we might know your mercies moving forward. Bless our town, and bless us this day we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Cindery, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Brockert?
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Present.
Councilmember Gordon?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Freilich?
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Present.
Senator?
Thank you. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda? Here and none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is Communications. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's Great. Next, we will be doing a proclamation. Thank you, Councilmember Freilich. Today, we're doing a proclamation for Live United Day, whereas the mission of United Way of Muscatine is to mobilize resources to empower the greater Muscatine community to improve the lives of people in need, and whereas the United Way of Muscatine has been impacting lives in Muscatine for 68 years, and whereas the United Way of Muscatine wishes to recognize the importance of advancing the common good by creating opportunities for a better life for all. Now therefore, I Brad Bark, Mayor of the City of Muscatine, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 14, 2022, as Live United Day in the City of Muscatine, Iowa, and encourage the residents of our community to show their support of United Way of Muscatine by wearing a Live United shirt. And I'll have you come up to the podium. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Bark, and thank you, council members, for taking the time tonight to make the proclamation for Live United Day on October 14. My name's Hillary Hankey. I'm the Community Engagement Manager at United Way of Muscatine. Shane Orr, he's the Executive Director. So Live United Day is a day where we encourage the community to come together so they can recognize the immense difference Muscatine citizens can make when we all work together to give back to our community. We'll be encouraging individuals to wear their Live United t-shirts, businesses to display Live United signs, and update their marquees, and everyone to change their profile pictures on their social media accounts to themselves in a Live United shirt or a Live United graphic. Great things really do happen when we live united, and I know that tomorrow we can create a better, or together, we can create a better tomorrow. Thank you all.
Keep up the great work, you guys. And we'll be moving along. Item number eight, Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered a normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes item 9A, items 10A through J, items 11A through E, items 12A through B, item 13 with bills totaling $8,623,594.55, and items 14A through B?
So move, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. We will be moving down to 15. It's a public hearing for environmental information for Phase 6 of the West Hill Sewer Separation Project. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here and none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich, and a second by Councilmember Hopkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next is Third and Final Reading of an Ordinance revising Title VII, Chapter 2 of the City Code of Muscatine regarding All-Terrain Vehicles. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on Third and Final Reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with the council?
Do we have additional information to share?
Yeah, we could do that now.
Was that later?
Well, why don't you go ahead and vote, and then we'll, Captain Keys is here to talk a little bit about what will be allowed and not allowed going forward.
Thank you.
Any comments from council right now?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. And now we'll have Captain Keys come up and just kind of reiterate what we can and cannot Welcome, Captain Keys.
So we'll kind of recap this and cover it quick for the off-road utility vehicles and what we're trying to implement. So just to make sure we're clear, the ORVs, the off-road vehicles and the utility vehicles, is a vehicle of not less than four tires and has a seat. It's not intended to be straddled by an operator, and it is designed with a steering wheel. Pictures seem to work the best, and as we move along, you'll see crazier and crazier versions of these, but these are the UTVs. Previously, the city prohibited ATVs and UTVs with the exception of public safety personnel or an approval by the Chief of Police. The Chief did approve ATVs and UTVs to be used for snow removal a few years back. The new code allows UTVs to be on city streets. You must meet the equipment requirements that we have and meet the operating standards. ATVs are only allowed for snow removal. The minimum equipment standards, these are some of which are on there that I wanted to mention, is turn signals and lamps that are manually operated switches, a speedometer, an electrically actuated horn, headlamps, taillamps, stoplamps, a mirror for the rear-facing, and they must have a muffler. The provisions for operating, they follow state code. They must be registered with the Muscatine County Recorder, and registration is required for these units, so it's not with the city, it is with the Muscatine County Recorder. A valid driver's license and 18 years of age or older. Proof of insurance. On the PD side, on the police department side, we're going, we want you to follow the 321 traffic codes, right? Stop signs, speeds, and follow the passenger requirements on the vehicle. And those passenger requirements are very obvious because they come from the manufacturer with the seat belts in it for three, or four, or six. Prohibited streets and highways, we made this very minimum so we could easily enforce it, and went with the areas that we thought would have the biggest safety issues: Highway 61, Park Avenue, and Dick Drake Highway. You can cross those roads, as it was brought up earlier. How do we get across them? It's that 90-degree straight angle across the road. So the ATVs, to clarify, is not less than three low-pressure tires. It's less than 1,000 pounds. This is a vehicle, a four-wheeler, that's meant to be straddled, right? It has handlebars for steering, and we would all know those as a four-wheeler. If this is what you have, it can only be used for snow removal. There is no exceptions. Is there any questions?
The slow-moving triangle, does that have to be on the, that's just one question that's been asked.
I believe that's not a requirement on here because you're not a slow-moving vehicle.
Okay. Yeah, that's okay. Why don't you go up to the podium, Mr. Kent?
I just want to ask. I'm already registered with the county.
I'll have you go up to the.
Here I am, Larry Kent, 1007 Oliver Street. I'm already registered with the county, so does that's all I have to have to be legally?
And all the requirements up there?
The insurance.
Insurance. As far as registration, that's my understanding. Registered with the county, yep.
With the county, yeah. I got a county sticker on there now and everything.
Yep, you don't have to register again with the city.
Again, all right, I'm already registered then.
You're legal.
I'm legal, all right. That's what I wanted to know. And I want to thank the council for voting this in and everything.
Okay, I have one correction. Not until the ordinance is published. Once it's published, you're legal.
That's just what Dennis told me. But it's not legal till it's published, so I can't thank anybody yet. Or can I? Well, I'm going to.
Well, we'll give you a call when it's published. Let you know.
Oh, I got the newspaper, so I can check that out. But I just want to thank everybody for doing this, even the mayor, because he can vote, but I think he was for it. And this gentleman, where'd he go? Right here. There's another guy that helped me out a lot, Captain Tony, very helpful on that. And I see anybody else? I miss anybody? I don't think I did. Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kent.
I have a question.
Yes.
I just have a question. I've had a couple residents call me already on this, and they're like, well, I'm not for ATVs on the streets. And I said, well, this isn't for ATVs. Went through the instructions as far as what they can do, but they are still concerned that they're going to have people in their neighborhoods running these ATVs up and down. And his thing was, well, can they take their ATVs and go gas them up at the gas station? I said, no. So how is the police force going to enforce that piece of it?
Well, we're treading on a little bit of water we haven't treaded on before, so if you're driving an ATV and it's not according to this code, you'll be treated like anybody that's driving a vehicle that's not registered. It is not allowed. So if you're moving snow, it is allowed, but if you're driving an ATV, there will be, we'll enforce the laws in place at that time. So I don't want to tell you exactly how that would be.
Okay.
But if, it'll follow every 321 law in the state. Those are not allowed. ATVs are not allowed.
Okay, thank you, that helped with the residents.
Any other comments? Yes.
Lieutenant Keys, can you give us an idea about where the citation level starts? I mean, if you are stopped, what's the fee?
If you're stopped on what?
That you're driving an ATV?
If you're driving a four-wheeler? Well, it's not a registered vehicle to be drove here. So there's registration violations, there's 321 violations, there's insurance violations. I mean, they're not set like the animal code side was. This is more of a criminal aspect of it.
So it could stack up and have multiple charges.
I wouldn't drive a four-wheeler in town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the captain?
No.
Thank you, Captain Keys. Next item is 17B, is a resolution setting a public hearing for October 20, 2022, on adopting a revised bike and pedestrian master plan. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So move, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with council? Here and none. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
And Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is 17C, is a resolution setting a public hearing on October 20, 2022, for the City of Muscatine Capital Improvement Plan, fiscal years 2024 through 2028. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Lewis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lewis.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with council? Here and none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Brockert?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 17F, is a request to issue a purchase order to Bayfield Snow Removal for snow removal and hauling in Central Business District. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with the council? Here and none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 17G, request to approve a purchase order to Bowlin Recreation for Fourth Street Park and Weed Park Playground Platforms Replacements. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with council? Here and none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Brockert?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 17F, is a request to issue a purchase order to Bayfield Snow Removal for snow removal and hauling in Central Business District. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with the council? Here and none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 17G, request to approve a purchase order to Bowlin Recreation for Fourth Street Park and Weed Park Playground Platforms Replacements. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with council? Here and none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is 17H, is a request to approve payment of economic assistance for certain small business, businesses in the Grand View Corridor. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments.
You bet.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a few minutes to talk about the behind-the-scenes effort that went into something like this. It's as simple as somebody applies and we give them a check. This was a multiple-team effort within the city. It started out with a simple idea thrown out by Public Works Director Steinman, saying some cities during major construction try to help businesses. I remember we were on the top of COVID and Grand View. And then working with Director, Financial Director Leek, and City Administrator Webb to find the funding that wasn't out of our general fund, but trying to come up with some ideas to help us find that. Then working with Councilwoman Brockert is always a great treat because we were able to sort of run with it and get moving. Community Foundation had a hand. They gave us the application to use again, which helped streamline the process. And then a huge thank you to Director Jody Royal Goodwin, because without that, we couldn't have started it, implemented, and paid out almost $185,000 to the businesses that were on the Grand View area that needed the funding. Huge effort by everybody in the city. I mean, and we can do it. It was a simple idea, one simple comment, that we started running with it, so it was the right thing to do. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments?
The video we saw of the precision machine utilizing that funding, is that right, Peggy and Nadine, right? Maybe that video is available for the public to view and see on, is it the Chamber of Commerce website, or?
The school district actually shot that video. I think it's on their webpage, and it might be on ours, too, but I could confirm that.
Okay. Well, maybe some, you know, information on that, too. I thought it was, you know, an excellent example of the productive nature of the program that, you know, everyone's worked on so well there.
Also, a collaborative effort that went into making the video.
Any other comments, discussions? Here and none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is item 17I, request to enter into a professional services agreement with legal abstract company to assist city staff with title research related to the West Sewer Hill, West Hill Sewer Separation Project, Phase 6, for the amount of $7,840. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert, and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council?
I assume we're doing this to avoid any surprises along the way.
City Administrator Webb?
I think it's just a matter of course, frankly. Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Here and none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 17J, is a request to submit a railroad crossing elimination planning grant application for a proposed rail-highway grade separation at the intersection of Dick Drake Way in southwest Muscatine. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here and none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 18. Councilmember Lewis, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Just, I thought it was actually the last home game for the Muskies, and we found out there is actually a conference game on the 21st, but big thing is make sure you go out and support our team, and there's great things happening this weekend, which I will defer for you to announce since it's your rocking on the 2nd, so. But yeah, so be safe out there. The other thing I want people to be aware of is in your Muscatine Power Water Bill came out with the leaf collection, what zones you're in, so be aware of that. Also, on the back half of that, there was actually a thing about the new snow removal, which I thought was a great way to reach out to citizens, so be, please beware of your Muscatine Power Water Bill this time. It actually has that information in there. Please take note. So thank you.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes, could we get a name tag for our new legal man?
Consider it done. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Councilmember Gordon?
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Freilich?
Nothing to any harm.
Councilmember Brockert?
Yes, I know we had mentioned in conjunction with the work that's going to be going on down at Kent Stein and Tom Brunner Fields, Tony Lacona Soul and I met yesterday, and we came up with October 26 as the day for the neighborhood meeting. It's going to be held at Brunner Field, and it's going to be an open house, since we did not want people sitting in the bleachers, quite possibly freezing their little tushies, to wait to hear from somebody, so.
Right.
You know, that way it's more comfortable for everybody, they can come and go, and we hope to have some refreshments for them when they come.
Very good. Did you spearhead that?
I nagged.
Well done. Councilmember Gendrich?
A couple of residents contacted me about the success and the appreciation that they felt from the police and fire department and everyone else involved with the open house last Sunday. Thought it was really a fun activity, informative. You know, a lot of positive things were said about that event, and I think it's great. And I want to thank the school district, too, for the nice tour last Tuesday night. I'm glad I don't teach there anymore, because, you know, the students were great, and I enjoyed my job, but I don't think I could find my way around in that building anymore.
It's a big building.
Yeah.
It's huge.
Councilmember Osborne?
I'd like to echo what he said around the, I mean, my daughter, my daughter just graduated from there last year, so I've been very involved, very in the building a lot, and just in one year's time, there's been a lot of great changes there already, lots of things I didn't recognize already. It's only been a year for me. But yeah, I really like what the school's doing, like what the county's doing, that meeting is productive and really a good thing. Lots of good events this weekend, but I'll let Mayor Beck, Brad Bark, speak on one in particular, and we live in a great community for these things.
Cinda?
26.
City Administrator Webb?
Yeah.
So yes, there are a couple of events. There's the Pearl City Vintage Market that is going to be down on the riverfront, starting at 10 o'clock. That'll be going till 3:00. And then there is Rockin' on 2nd, which is switched up a little bit due to the cold weather in the evening. But we have Winterland, which is presented by Crossroads, so it's going to be a great event to raise money for Crossroads specifically. And we postponed the Rock, Shop of the Cop event to February 11 at the Armory. And then on top of that, there was a really cool thing that I was invited to this past Sunday at the top of the Merrill. There's a, it was a ceremony, promotional ceremony for Rear Admiral Pamela Miller, who's from Muscatine, and she was promoted to a second star Rear Admiral for the United States Navy, and is the top officer of the United States Marine Corps for medical personnel, which I thought was pretty cool. So there's about 40 personnel that were on the top of the Merrill in uniform. It was one of those really cool items that they came to Muscatine to do this for a couple retirements as well, when they could have went anywhere. So pretty cool item. Next, we will do a request to enter closed session per Iowa Code Section 21.5.1.1(c) to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent and where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in the litigation, in accordance with Iowa Code